Please make sure to record Roland and Brandon, thank you.
Will you share the presentation?
Sandra, I think it's better to wait so that we do the, we engage in the introductions because people can't see.
When, when would you like to do the introductions? Oh, to share the presentation?
After, after the introductions.
Sure. Thank you, Alex. So would you unshare Ralph? Okay, thank you. So Alex, do you want to get us started?
Yeah, sure. Everybody's in the room, Ralph?
As far as I can see right now, yes, and I'm constantly checking too as well. Thank you.
Okay, wonderful. So good evening, everyone. I want to thank all of the parents, community members, students that are here with us this evening. As we open up our conversations in preparation to the new academic school year. We're really excited about having all of our students back. And with that excitement, we want to make sure that we inform parents as well as students about the upcoming health measures that we have put in place to continue to ensure the healthy start of this academic school year, but most importantly, that we have continuous learning, a continuous learning environment for our students because we want to make sure that while you are in school, you are safe. So this evening, we'll have an opportunity to learn from Ms. Fales as well as other members of the team about the safety measures that have been put in place in alignment to the CDC recommendations as well as our state to ensure a safe return to school. Before we go into the depth of the presentation, I want to take some time to formally introduce the different members of the team. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Dr. Alexander Estrella, the Superintendent of Norwalk Public Schools.
And Chairman Austin, what I think the board was going to go next?
Okay, so I'm going to turn it over now to our chairman and he will begin and we will have all of our board members introduce themselves.
Thank you, Dr. Estrella. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for being here. It looks like we have a great turnout. For those who don't know me, my name is Colin Hosten. I'm currently the Chair of the Norwalk Board of Education and I'm excited for another school year.
Good evening. My name is Diana Carpio, Vice Chair of the Board of Education. Thank you for everyone that's here this evening with lots of information coming your way and I'm too looking forward to another school year.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Godfrey Zima, Board Secretary for Norwalk Board of Education. I look forward to engaging with you all this year.
And good evening, everybody. My name is Kara Nelson-Bakey and I am an at-large Board of Education member as of last year. I'm very much looking forward to this school year. Thank you all for being here with us tonight.
I'm Erica DeTama, District D BOE, and going into my fourth year.
Hi, I'm Janine Randolph, also an at-large member as of this, this past year. And I'm looking forward to this whole year getting this started. So let's get this started.
Chairman Houston, was that the last of the board members so far?
That's all the board members currently present. Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much. And now we're going to turn it over to Dr. McBride.
Good evening, everyone. Thomas McBride Jr., the Deputy Superintendent of Excellence, Equity and Inclusion, and I'm excited for a brand new school year as well.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nick Do. I am the new Director of Communications and Marketing and I'm beyond thrilled to be here.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Lunda Smannie, the Chief Finance Officer. I am excited for the school year and welcome. Thank you.
And I am Sandra Feijaoz. I'm an Assistant Superintendent of Business and Operations. And now a few members of my department will introduce themselves.
Good evening. I'm Joanne Melonowski and I'm the Coordinator of School Health Services and I am looking forward to a very good school year.
Hi, good evening. I'm Jennifer Rollinson, the Assistant Nursing Supervisor, also looking forward to a wonderful year.
Hi, my name is Joanna Zambetter and I'm the Transportation Logistical Administrator for the District and I am too looking forward to a successful, healthy year.
Good evening. My name is Bill Hodel. I'm the Director of Facilities. While my work is never fully completed, I can tell you this, we have done many upgrades over the summer. Welcome.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jill Press. Azan, looking forward to a new year.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ryan Harold. I'm the District Supervisor for Safety and Security and appreciate everybody coming here tonight and finding out about what we have in store for this school year.
Good evening, everyone. Rob Pennington, Assistant Superintendent. Really excited for the new year and now members of the department are going to introduce themselves.
Hello, everyone. I am Bridget Adams. I am the Executive Director for Specialized Learning for the District. I am so honored and humbled to have rejoined the Norwalk community and I wish you all a happy school year.
Hello. I am the, on that. The admin of specialized learning and I my parents can reach out to me for anything specialized learning related.
Good evening. My name is Francis Sais. I'm the Education Administrator for MLLs and the Lead Administrator for the Family Center. At the center, we provide families with a one-stop location for them to experience a seamless registration process as well as to have access to Norwalk Public Schools resources. As the educator administrator for MLL, I oversee all the MLL student services and programs, including bilingual, dual-language, and English as a second language. Parents would ask me questions about the registration process, placement, MLL services, programs that will best meet the interests of their children. So I'm very happy to share some more information tonight.
Good evening. My name is Stacy Bergen and I am the Educational Administrator for Curricula and Professional Development. If you want to talk about what your kids are learning about, reach out to me. I'll be happy to answer any of your questions.
Hello, families. Good evening. My name is Amaris Melendez. I'm the Education Administrator for Early Childhood. I want to wish everyone a very joyful and healthy season, a school season, and a special welcome to all our youngest learners, kindergarten students and pre-k students. Welcome to the NPS family.
Good evening. I'm Deborah, Dr. Deborah Perry, Educational Administrator for SRBI, Scientific Research-Based Intervention. And feel free to reach out for me on any support with intervention. It's so great to have you here tonight. Thanks so much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jim Martinez. I'm the Education Administrator for School Counselors and Social Services. So overall, the role that I play in the district is coordinating, the coordination of care for social emotional learning. I supervise the support staff in the schools. I also am the Coordinator of Section 504 for the District. In addition to that, among a number of other responsibilities, I also oversee the District Crisis Team. Hopefully, we will not have, we will not have to mobilize them too much this year at all, but very excited to, to, to be among this and feel very grateful and privileged to be among this group of professionals and, and district-wide community. And I cannot really wait to, to, to see what this year is going to yield for us in improvements and in successes for our kids and for our families. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ralph Alzisi. I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Digital Learning and Innovation and excited to be here, excited to get our year started. I just, just can't wait to get started. So I'm going to pass this off to one of our newest staff members working with me.
Good evening, everyone. Hi, my name is Sarah Zoiski and I'm the Leader of Future-Ready Programs and I'm just really excited to launch our programs and just wishing everyone a happy and healthy new school year.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. My name is Dr. Sandra Case and I am an Executive Director of Leadership Development. And I just cannot wait to work with the administrators who really provide the best possible education for your students, for your children. Now, we're looking forward to a fabulous school year.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mary Ann Shepherd. I'm also an Executive Director of Leadership Development. And I just echo all the joyful sentiments that I heard from my colleagues and I'm just thrilled to be here and look ahead, really looking ahead to an exciting year.
That was the last of the introductions, Dr. Estrella, if you'd like us to present now?
Yeah, so again, thank you, everyone, for joining us. I hope that you had an opportunity to get to know the team, not only from our, our board, but also from the different constituents that are here to support our schools. I'm hoping that you, if you are a new parent in the district, have had an opportunity to get to, to know your principals. I'm really excited for the opening of schools. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Fales to start the presentation just to make sure that everyone is well-informed and prepared for school opening. Ms. Fales, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Estrella, and thank you, everybody, for joining us once again. And before we get started, we do want to make sure that you understand the mechanism by which you can engage with us. And so Ralph, will you go over just the meeting logistics as to how people who are participating can post questions and what that will look like at the end?
Sure, definitely. So everybody in the meeting, if you look, you'll actually see that you have an option for Q and A. So if you can and you have any questions as we go along, please make sure to type in your answers. At the end of the presentation, we will view the questions that you've handed in. We'll be able to moderate them and be able to give you some, some feedback on those. And I believe anything that we can answer, we'll make sure that we kind of follow up with also after the meeting.
Okay, thank you so much. Are you able to put this in presentation mode?
It's not, I'm sorry.
Thank you, and I hope that this is better for everybody to see. So we have, we've already done this slide, which is we're meeting the NPS family, but we can go over the agenda. You'll have the opportunity here to really understand what are going to be the mitigating strategies that we have put in place to make sure that we are having healthy school environments for our staff, for our students, and for our families. We're going to also go over learning during isolation and the supports that we will offer our students. We're going to go over some procedures on how we're going to communicate with our families and some things that our families can do to better communicate with us. The services at the Family Center and how we can make sure that we are fully utilizing our Family Center as a one-stop shop, like Francis had mentioned. And then some resources for you. This presentation will be posted on our website so that you'll be able to have this to reference to. And then it'll be translated also, and there'll be phone numbers and other mechanisms by which you can ask follow-up questions if you do not have questions for this evening. Thank you. So the current situation in terms of COVID and learning is that the state of Connecticut still is very much committed to education in person. And in doing so, and I wanted Dr. Estrella actually to mention is that we were one of the first districts to actually come back to in-person learning. I'll signal when I need the next slide. Thank you. I wanted to make sure that we understand that we've been in in-person learning for quite some time. So we have had quite the practice with keeping our environment safe and making sure that we are in partnership with our families in meeting your needs. So there's not going to be any hybrid or remote learning the same way that there wasn't last year. But there will be learning if you are in isolation and that will come later in the presentation. So the state guidelines still continue to support optional masking in all school settings and masking when ill. So as of August 16, 98% of Norwalk students ages 12 through 17 had received one dose of the COVID vaccine, which is really a great number. And the other one is that 50% of our students in ages five through 11 have at least received one dose. So we're still leading many of our districts, the big five that we compare ourselves to in terms of our vaccination rate, which is great. And Fairfield County has been steadily in the upper end of low community level and in the lower end of the medium community level. And our guidelines actually plan for the medium community level and these are the new CDC community levels that we can actually keep up with on a weekly basis through the Norwalk city site. So the following mitigation efforts are still in place. We're going to be doing in-person learning for grades pre-k through 12. Masking is optional. We have a strong commitment to testing and home test kits are available for anybody that is sent home feeling ill. We will maintain three feet of social distancing when feasible. Outdoors, no masks are required. Well, no masks are required really indoors. It's optional, but this may change depending on the community transmission. We maintain ventilation and air filtration systems, so a strong commitment to our MRF-13 filters and to our desktop filters. And we have a plan for isolation when required. So if somebody is feeling really ill, the schools will have a plan for how is it that we isolate that person just in case the person is COVID positive. We continue with our hand sanitizer and our hand washing protocols, asking students to wash their hands after recess and gym and before eating. Breakfast and lunch are available. I'm sure you all know that breakfast, all meals are for free now, so we, we were able to continue the benefits that were with us during COVID. So we're very happy to do that. And the cafeterias will be in use as well as other spaces, and this is not new to us. Different stations will be offering meals depending on the school's options. So some high schools and middle schools have different stations. Some elementary schools do not. And then three feet social distancing while eating, sanitizing our hands before eating again. And schools will be cleaned and sanitized according to the adopted procedures and rigorous standards will continue. So even though the CDC had allowed us to actually ease on our sanitation protocols, we've always maintained the really rigorous standards of sanitizing our schools. And that has been from the beginning of COVID, so we've never actually relaxed on those procedures. And new cleaning products are recommended by the CDC. The peroxide multi-surface cleaner are available to each staff member and they're available at our schools along with hand sanitizer, wipes, and all the things that staff requests we are able to get for them. We still have MRF-10 filters and MRF-13 HEPA air filters and they were changed this summer and maintained and making sure that we're keeping up the pace with the manufacturer's recommendations for the changing of those filters. We will have windows cracked for ventilation. And there's no fans that are actually blowing directly at people. Fans are used to exhaust, so you can actually point a fan away from where people are sitting to make sure that we're keeping the air circulating. And we're happy to have our visitors return to our school. And we do say, if you are not feeling well, you should remain at home. But visitors are welcome. And while you abide by our protocols, you will make sure that you're being a safe visitor and that you're keeping our school safe. Social gatherings have also been allowed. We had a really great spring of social gatherings and so then we'll continue these into the fall and staff meetings also. I'm sorry, there's some feedback. If we can actually mute ourselves. And there's sorry, I just, I'm trying to mute. And as far as when you have a positive case at home and your child presents ill or if you're a staff member and you present ill, parents of a student with a positive case will report to either the Department of Health or to the school. But we do ask you to continue that communication with us because we do still maintain the state website that reports the number of cases at each of our schools. Nurses will continue to support households with a positive case. So if you have a student that is positive, you'll get a call from your school nurse to help you determine the isolation time and actually support you with any questions that you may have about COVID and how is it that we can best support you during this time.
Sorry about that, Sandra.
That's okay. Thank you. School leaders will continue to inform the community of a positive case in the school. If you're in an elementary school, you will get a note that says somebody in the class was identified as COVID positive and also somebody in the school. And in the middle schools and in the high schools, you'll get a note that says that somebody within the school has been COVID positive. Another, if another, any student or staff presents with COVID symptoms, they will be sent home and they can return to school with a negative COVID test or a note from the medical provider. Or if the student is positive, we'll talk about that in a little, in a little bit. So what happens when you're sick? We continue to emphasize the importance of staying home when you're sick. And, and if you are, if you are having symptoms that are in line with COVID-19 cells, like flu symptoms, you should stay home and seek testing and care regardless of your vaccination status. And you actually can get home test kits right from your school nurse. So students that present any symptoms will be sent home and we ask parents to take tests with you and to possibly get the student tested with your local clinic or your doctor if possible, or use a home test kit. So when you're exposed, you wear a mask for 10 days and you watch for symptoms and you get tested on day six after exposure. So this means somebody in your household is COVID positive. That means that you have to wear a mask even though you may not be sick, but if you're, you're just waiting to see if you're going to have any symptoms. And then you test yourself on day six after the exposure. And when you're COVID positive, this is when you're sick, you notify the school or the Department of Health and you proceed to isolate for at least five days. You may return on day six if there are no symptoms and mask must be worn through day 10. So if you're positive, your day zero is the day that you find out you're positive or that you have symptoms. And then your day one through five is when you're in isolation. You're wearing a mask at home or wherever you are. You're not in school at that time. And then on day six through 10, you can return if you don't have any symptoms, but you're still going to be masked during that time. And now we're talking about the health guidance and sports. So not that much has changed from last year. The, the exposure and isolation procedures and protocols for athletes is the same as for everybody else. You do still have the return to play after COVID, which was in place already last year, which means that you have to get play medical clearance from your medical provider. And our, our athletic directors are able to help you with that and our coaches are able to help you with that. So we really just wanted to point that out to you that nothing much has changed from last year in terms of the health guidance and the FCAC. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Robert Pennington, or is this you, Ralph?
It's me, so for the first time. Thank you, thank you. So, and good evening, everybody. I just wanted to talk very, very briefly about learning during isolation. So as, as Ms. Fales had mentioned, that we, if students are in isolation, they will still receive work from their school, from their teachers. So work will be sent home for them to be able to, you know, continue, continue their learning. And we will make sure that there, in that case, that there will be online tutoring that's available. So there'll be some online help desk supports if students need it throughout the school day. And more information on how to log into that, which will be similar to this Zoom meeting, will be provided as, as the year begins to each one of the schools and to all the parents. Good evening, everyone. We will continue to have a focus on social emotional learning. We have SEL that is embedded into all classes. We are working on our health and PE curriculum, which the state has come out with a new framework and we are working to embed those into our health curricula. We've also been able to, we also have our school counselors, our social workers and our psychologists who are going to be providing small group and individual support. And we have wraparound service referrals with our community agencies. This year, we were also able to expand our level of support by adding counselors into our elementary schools and we have clinicians supporting our middle schools. As, as we talk about special education, all special education instruction and related services will be provided in person for our planning and placement team meetings. Those will, parents will have the option for virtual or in-person learning. And then we will be able to provide some additional before and after-school supports as needed. And as we talk about our medically complex students and students with vulnerable family members, we, we will be following the homebound process where families can fill out a homebound application. And we would go through that process to support families in that, in that area.
Thank you so much, Rob and Ralph. One thing that we wanted to make sure is that we remind our families of the appropriate ladder of referral when you do have a concern. And if you have a concern that is at the school level, that you address that concern with your student's teacher or teachers. And from there, if you're able to, not able to resolve it, that the assistant principal is glad to step in and try to help mitigate whatever the concern is or whatever is not working well. And from there, if that is still not resolved, that you go to the principal and the principal will do his or her best to also help solve the problem. And then there's a central office referral if you have not been able to find a solution at the school level. And we want to make sure that we are making this clear because sometimes if we miss one of these steps, we end up having to go back and do the steps all over again. And sometimes in the inverse, but either way, we end up having to, to make sure that it's actually being resolved at the classroom level. And that's if you have a concern and how you would like to elevate it. But now I'm going to welcome Nick to talk to us about, would you move the slide?
Well, thank you, Sandra. Well, as mentioned before, I am Nick Do, the newly appointed Director of Communications and Marketing, along with my colleague Emily Morgan, who just started this week. We are thrilled to be part of the NPS family and more than eager to tell the story of this wonderful community. Among the things that we're tackling in this early stage is really evaluating the communication systems, the tools and processes that's in place. We're really looking at the essential touchpoints that we have within the community and determining what works and what needs to be looked at closer. We're definitely determined to think creatively on how we can amplify the stories of our community. But above all, we intend to engage the community and provide the right information at the right time when our families need it. So, so more to come as the new communications team hit the ground running. Well, thank you so much again.
Thank you. Can we have the slide moved forward? And now Francis, will you take us through utilizing the Family Center?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Again, I'm here tonight to share how we utilize the Family Center to welcome and support families as they transition into our school community. One of the major of, major offices that we have at the Family Center One of the major of major offices that we have at the family center is the Office of Registration. And in the Office of Registration, this is where we first welcome our families to Norwalk Public Schools and do an end process that is nurturing and caring to our families. Our family representatives who are part of our staff at the family center guide and support the families in the registration process from the signing on and logging on into our Norway Public School website and registering and and gathering documents to make sure that they're ready for school. The family center is an amazing place for families. Our second official office at the family center is the Office of Multilingual Learners. In the Office of Multilingual Learners, we assess students to determine through their screening and identifying through their assessment whether they are potential ML students. And through that assessment, students are placed in programs, like the bilingual programs or ESO programs that they want to have their their child to be serviced. We also provide with assistance on how to navigate the educational system. It's something that is mutually, is something that may be a bit scary, but we try to encourage them that they are able to really learn and navigate the educational system at Norway Public Schools. Our specialized learning department has provided us with an onsite social worker who coordinates all the services for families based on their needs and also supports them with the social and emotional support that they need. Some families come with with trauma. They they feel comfortable enough to share it at the family center. And we have the great specialized learning. The social worker supports families in the initial referral process and PPT me. The Early Childhood also assists in the family center with the registration process for pre-K and the readiness program. They also inform the families of NECC, which is the Norwalk Early Childhood Center, LE, which is Early Language Literacy Initiative. And they also inform them of the Brookside Montessori Program that's in place in in Brookside. We also, as a resource, have the health services. We have an onsite nurse who screens all the medical forms and immunizations and does referral services for other facilities, nonprofit and profit facilities that could provide the immunizations of physicals for our students. Office of Technology has been amazing in supporting the family center where they begin the process for for students to to make sure that students receive the devices that they need in the school. They also have a help desk, which is available for families to reach out for any assistance with online access with passport, password reset, or even how to navigate the Norway Public School website. In addition, our office of our food service department supports families with the completion of the application forms. I know for the next four years, all families have access to the food. Also want families to to support families in filling out the N Hunger Connecticut Survey. Through that survey allows the system to pick up those families that would need that application process. And the food service provides us services and supporting families and filling out those applications. Office of Transportation provides with all types of assistance when it comes to transporting our students, our pre-K, our transitional program, door-to-door service for our special needs students. I know Joanna is amazing with answering all the questions that families have about pickup. They also support with the app to be able for families to track where the buses are, if they're running late, the location of the bus. So they do a wonderful job with informing parents and how to streamline and support them with transportation. And the ML Department also supports with all family engagement and collaboration with nonprofit organizations and with other departments like specialized learning. We're putting together some PTs to be able to offer families. Strict. Next slide. So these are some of the family workshop and community events that the ML Department in collaboration with other departments, we have put together. These are just some of the examples. For example, the Courage to Speak Workshop is a program designed to help parents understand the impact of drug abuse on youth and give them the knowledge required to communicate more effectively with their children about dangers of drug. We also have three different sessions, financial literacy sessions.
Frances, you were muted.
She muted herself.
Sorry, someone muted me.
I left off on you said financial literacy.
Yes, we have. Thank you for that. We have three sessions on financial literacy. This was in collaboration with Chase, Chase Bank. They're trying to support us in lessening the gap between Black, Brown, minorities and not being able to have access to to home ownership. So the first session will be on budget and savings, providing information of what to consider when making financial goals and how to accomplish those. We also have one, the understanding your credit, taking a deep dive from the factors that dictate your credit score and how that affects your savings and costs and how that impacts on home ownership. We have an amazing performance coming up October 1st of Langgringa, the play about a New York who traveled to Puerto, who traveled from Puerto Rico and trying to come into the United States. It's a bilingual performance. And the one of the other ones from the financial literacy is providing information about how do we obtain access to purchasing our homes? And we're going to continue to collaborate with other department and other agencies to provide families with a lot more workshops and events. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Frances. And we bring you to our last slide. And in our last slide, we just wanted to make sure that we share with you the resources that we have available amongst those that Frances just highlighted. This slide will be available to you. So if you have questions regarding school health services, Joanne Malinowski is our point person amongst other people in her team. For food services, it'll be Jill Crest. Transportation, it'll be Joanna's and better. For facilities and maintenance, it will be Bill Hodel. For special education services. Where you put that back? For special education services, it'll be Bridget Adams. For preschool services, it'll be Amaris. For the family center, it'll be Frances. And for our future ready academies, like including Virtual Academy, Twilight EMA, it'll be Sarah Zawalski. And we have a live link and I'm sure you are well aware that you can go on our website and get our school information right from the website in order for you to get more information regarding your particular school. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ralph and Nick, who are going to be curating some of these questions so that we can make sure that we try to meet your needs.
Well, wonderful. Well, thank you, Sandra. Once again, I think we want to hear from you. We saw a couple of folks raising hands. Once again, to remind everyone to see if you can submit your questions and we'll definitely do our best to answer them. I will sit through and thematically group some of these questions and pose it to the panel. And absolutely looks, there have been some questions already. And one of the things that I think is a great opportunity to expand, I was going to ask Ralph to actually expand on it. Mr. Pennington actually answered this already, but really want to expand a little bit more about the future ready program. So Ralph, why don't you just expand on that a little bit more?
Sure. So our future ready programs this year, and Sarah was on just a moment ago and then had to pass the lead. But basically Sarah will be leading our future ready programs. And we have three programs together. We talked earlier this year about having options for our students. And we want to make sure that we have the right options to customize our learning for all of our students. In order to do this, we decide what some of the programs that we're starting to offer and then put into place are future rate programs, which include our Virtual Academy, which is a fully virtual school for grades 11 and 12 for students to take classes online. And it also is dovetailed with our Twilight Academy, our PM Academy for students that need a an after-school or a PM program. Many of the students are actually enrolled in both. So they may take classes and some classes during the day virtually and then come as needed at at night for their classes. So that's kind of the overview that we're very, very excited to be launching this program in another week.
Well, I mean, we're once again, just going through. One of the things that was sent recently to, or there were translators available or programs available in Creole in other languages prevalent in the community itself. Are there any? Who can I post it to?
Oh.
And is the question if there are programs in Creole available, like in an academic setting?
Um, yes, in prevalent within the community itself.
Rob, do you, Rob, do you want to take a stab at it?
I mean, we have translators and we have documents that are translated in Creole for families. And then in our schools, we provide supports as needed.
Great. Thank you, Rob. There was a couple of questions about really, you know, and we dealt heavily on COVID at this point, too. And, you know, unfortunately, this day and age, we we really are, you know, open to a lot of, a lot of the different disease outbreak at that point, too. There was a couple of questions about the preparedness and our things about monkeypox itself, too. Is there, do we have anything at that point, too?
And I'm going to ask Joanne or Jen to please just jump in. We're going to try our best. We actually have been meeting with the the city and the city has another meeting scheduled for this Thursday to coordinate efforts around monkeypox. We have been in information sessions to just make sure that the mitigating strategies that we have in place would also address the spread of monkeypox, which is spread a lot like the way that COVID is through close contact with somebody, through possible object sharing of objects or sharing of clothing items and through droplets. So a lot of the mitigating strategies that we actually have in place for COVID will help with the reduction of other airborne illnesses or other illnesses that are contagious. But I'll let Joanne or Jennifer, if you wanted to add to that.
I think you pretty covered, pretty well covered that. As in children, the monkeypox is really not spread that easily. We really, as far as I know, we don't have any cases in Connecticut.
Connecticut. I just.
Yeah, we don't. I mean, as far as I know from yesterday. I think we have so many mitigating measures that not only protect against monkeypox, but also the flu, which is a really big one. And last year, we had very little flu and the year before, because everybody was masked. We have so many mitigating measures in place, washing your hands, keeping distance from people and not coming to school if you're sick. Those old fashioned sick day guidelines, which were before COVID, are still in effect. We do not want children to come if they have a fever of over 100. If they have any symptoms, nausea, vomiting. If they get sick at 2:00 AM and they're, they have diarrhea and they're vomiting, they should not come to school that morning. It has nothing to do with COVID. It may or may not, but if they're sick, they should stay home. So I think that's going to be our focus, focus. We've sort of shifted and pivoted to include all the other things that we've kind of left on the back burner during COVID because everything could be COVID. We're not poo-pooing that. But we've been open and we're probably one of the very few districts in Connecticut. And I know Dr. Astraea can probably speak to that better than I can since July of 2020, when pretty much everybody else was shut down. And we've got a pretty good track record regarding how we've treated that. We have very, very rigorous controls and cleaning measures. We never fell back on any of our cleaning measures, even though the CDC said, no, you don't have to do that. We have really kept up at it. And I think we we have very, very good measures in place. For summer, during our summer school, we had lots of kids in school and we had around 36 cases of positive kids coming to school. And basically, it was because of household exposures, more so than in-school transmission. And that's a very important point because that tells us that what we're doing, we're doing everything correctly. And we're going to continue to do so. And I wanted to remind everybody, I don't want to take up a lot of time, but I want to remind everybody that there is a, we're lucky to have a full-time school nurse in every single building. And as parents and community people, if you have questions, please reach out to your school nurse. She can answer lots of questions for you. And, you know, she's very aware of what our policies are. And of course, you can ask school health services. You can call me or our assistant supervisor, Jennifer Rollinson.
All right. Thanks, Joanna. We only have about 13 minutes left. Sorry. I'm like, no, thank you. All very important stuff. Okay? So go ahead, Nick and Ralph. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much again. There was a question, probably Rob can can potentially answer this, but a, my son has autism and would like to find out more about programs, after-school programs.
So they would reach out to Bridget Adams and I put in her email address in a response. So she will be happy to share all of that information and talk about how we can best support the family.
Looking forward to connecting.
There was a couple, another question. I would like to know what is in place for gifted and talented children in elementary school, specifically in Fox Run Elementary. Last year, the classes were cut short.
All of our schools in K through eight offer gifted and talented from grades three through eight. And Lori Lebowitz is our point person. She's part of the curricula team. And they can reach out to Lori Lebowitz and I can put her information into the chat.
Wonderful. So there's a hold on, so just a lot of screaming questions here. So there's a question earlier. If a child is not able to correctly wear a mask, can they continue to remain home in a, in in the day six to 10 with an online support?
Absolutely. And we can, we can support, we could support the child. Rob, am I okay in saying that? We would continue to support them in isolation.
So there's another question here. Good evening. I would like to know if I had to register again for reentry for the eighth grade and how I can, how I know the list of school supplies itself, too? Is there?
Say that again.
I apologize, but good evening. It says, I would like to know if I have to re, to register again for reentry for the eighth grade and how I, how can I know the list of school supplies?
If you have been already registered in our school, you do not have to re-register for middle school. If you left the district and you're coming back, you will have to do the re-registration process and demonstrate proof of residency. And the family center is happy to help with that process. School supplies tend to be very unique per school and Rob can jump in. School teachers tend to have their own list of supplies in school. and schools tend to have their own list of suggested supplies. So I would recommend getting in touch with the school and actually, um, speaking with some, either the secretary who is readily available. Again, the teacher, if it's only one teacher, um, is also another person that will be returning soon. But right now, you can actually contact the school.
So this, um, the, the next question is really on, um, uh, security protocols or there are new protocols that will be taken to ensure school safety, uh, particularly when students are outside during recess. How is NPS ensuring their safety itself? If we can, uh, comment on that a little bit.
Yeah, sure. Absolutely. Um, so in, in terms of our safety and security systems, uh, I can confidently say that Norwalk Public Schools has some of the tightest and stringent, more stringent, um, as well as the most security systems within the country. We have very secure schools. Uh, in particular, um, the students outside, we've increased our measures of communication through applications. Uh, we ensure that all of our PA systems work outside. Uh, we make sure that all of our students, uh, while our staff that are supervising students, um, have walkie-talkies, uh, as well as through our building response or emergency response teams, we have dedicated members that go outside to ensure that students that are outside and staff are brought back in.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much for that. If we can comment on, so what are the plans for reaching kids at risk? Kids that are failing beyond giving them the lowest grade at 50, which should not be happening. I see lots of resources going to all sorts of things, but really nothing, the direct resource to kids that are slipping through the cracks itself. What are sort of our different, uh, strategies and, and, uh, in mitigating this?
So I think that as a district, we are continually working. We're revising our curricula to support all students. We have put it, we have interventionists that have been put in place and coaches to support students and teachers. So as a district, we have continually been upgrading our support so that we can reach all students and help them to continue and grow and learn.
And, and Rob, if I can add to that too, uh, the Future Ready Schools that we talked about are, are an example of that, the upper grade levels and how we're trying to address those needs for students that are just different learners and that just need a different environment.
So this is, uh, next question is really directed at Joanne. Do you have a contact information for the epidemiologist? Uh, would hope this is readily available stat for everyone to know going forward.
We do not have an epidemiologist for Norwalk Public Schools. We partner with our Norwalk Health Department. And the epidemiologist, uh, at the Norwalk Health Department is Brian Weeks. We do interface with him every Thursday afternoon, along with our Director of Health and Dr. Weinberger, um, as well as Sandra Faeos and the entire team, Jennifer Rollinson as well. So we would be well aware if we had to, um, you know, change. We have to pivot. We've been pivoting for the past two years, um, quickly. Uh, if you ever look at our very first guidelines that we did and you look at them today, they're, they're pretty different, except for the cleaning protocols. Masking's optional, et cetera. The one thing I'd like to just remind everybody is that we do have many, many test kits. We have them in every school nurse's office. We have them at the family center. If you want to test, if you would like to pick them up, um, if you send your child in to get it, we will give them a test kit. If we send a child home that we may feel is ill, they will need, um, they'll have to go home with a test kit. And they're free, so please don't hesitate to ask. We have lots of PPE for staff and for students.
So we have, uh, a couple more minutes to go for the event. We're really conscious about everyone's time. So, uh, we'll go through a couple more question here. So, uh, the, one, one of the latest, uh, questions are all hot and cool lunches and all, and the schools free to all students at all schools? Or do they have an account set up and the money available?
Jill, do you want to try to take a crack at this? This, if, if your sound is working?
My sound is working.
Okay.
Um, all meals, breakfast and lunch. All students will get one free breakfast and one free lunch per day. What we're suggesting for families to set up a MySchoolBucks account for thing extra. So the MySchoolBucks account can be set up at the family center. We, you can contact me. I'm happy to help. We suggest that please do the MySchoolBucks account for a second month. If a student is still hungry, water, Snapple, things like that, à la carte items are the why we're at least to open a MySchoolBucks account. All students every day can receive one free breakfast and one free lunch.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. I, I see that Amaris is, uh, is, uh, starting to answer this, but maybe, uh, Amaris can, you can, um, verbally answer this too. But, uh, uh, will parents be allowed in, in, in it as far as it, for kindergarten, since it's their first school experience to drop off on their first day?
Sure. So to support our students that are coming in for the first time, we do have a staggered start across the first two days, which is, uh, half the class coming in. Um, and we offer flexibilities, right? As students need in order for the child to feel safe and secure in their new environment. So, yes.
And that's, we do. If I could actually add to that though, I think different schools have different processes. So I would recommend actually checking in with your school. Some schools will allow the parent to walk the child to the class versus some school will, will have them come to some hallway. So I would definitely say that this, that they'll do something to make sure that we're being, um, appropriate with making students feel safe, but that they tend to be unique to each school. Thank you, Amaris.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So we'll probably have time for two more questions. One of the, uh, questions, maybe I'll, I'll address to Ralph, uh, at this point too. But, uh, will the, the Q and A, the written questions itself, as we move along, be translated to Spanish and, and Asian Creole?
Yeah, we'll, we'll make a copy of the, the questions, because our number of questions here to make sure that we have an FAQ that we can post after this. And, um, we can make sure that once the questions are answered, they can be translated in both languages, just like there's two interpretation rooms going on currently.
Uh, potentially maybe the, one of, one or two more, uh, questions, but I, I see Bridget is, uh, answering this question already, but maybe you can verbalize your response. Uh, will Bridget, um, uh, be using the same sped curriculum she did at the Bridgeport Public Schools?
So I actually just hit submit on my response, inviting Nicole to reach out to me directly. Um, there is no special education curriculum specific, um, to Bridgeport or to Norwalk or that I've ever used. So I really look forward to having a longer, more in-depth conversation, uh, to talk through some of the systems that I know are incredibly effective here that I've used in other locations and to collaborate together to grow our program here in Norwalk. So Nicole, please reach out to me directly. And of course, anyone else with similar concerns or questions. And, um, last thing I'll say is that, um, soon you will see, um, some invitations for roundtable discussions with me at the family center. And I truly look forward to having the opportunity to connect with folks and learn more about Norwalk. Thanks.
So finally, I, I guess, uh, you know, one of the later questions here is, um, are the high schools back to three lunch shifts?
You know, I don't know. I, I would say that that's something that the high schools will probably answer. I don't want to say the wrong, um, answer unless somebody else on the team knows. I don't know if Rob or Ralph, if you're aware, if there are three shifts or if there are. Now, right? Okay. So those are programming, programming, um, needs that the high schools address themselves. So I can't answer that, but I'm sure that your high school principal would be able to answer that.
Great. Well, I think that's all the time we have. Uh, from what I see, uh, we had really wonderful turnout and really great engagements here. Um, what, um, so that concludes this Q and A portion and this event. A recording of this event will be posted on our channels by the end of the day tomorrow, August 24th. On behalf of, uh, Dr. Estraya, Dr. McBride, or esteemed board and the rest of our NPS team, um, we really thank you for the time, uh, taking time out of your busy schedule to be with us this evening and, uh, have a good night. Thank you again.
Thank you.